The time being 7:30, I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight is a continuation of a public hearing for 586 Manly Street. It was continued from two weeks ago. We have the bonus engineer who's going to introduce himself.
Will we start here?
Yeah.
I just want to put on the record I was absent from the last meeting, but I've reviewed the meeting minutes and I'm up to date on this hearing.
This being a special permit, we need four of the five members to vote on it. Mr. Noes wasn't here last week, but he has reviewed everything.
Good evening, as the chairman and members of the board, Paul Matos, with Alan Major Associates. I'm also accompanied by Matt Davis and Sherry Clancy from National Development. We are here for you for 586 Manly Street, in which we're proposing a 210,600-foot square foot warehouse. Site is currently developed. So what we're doing, a complete breakdown to construct a building with loading spaces on the north side of the building and standard parking on the south side. At the last meeting, the board requested that if we can look at the truck entrance and see if we can modify that to keep all semi-trailers going into the site staying within the central line of Manly Street. So we have revised the plans to accommodate that. You can see on the vehicle movement plan on sheet C-601, we show the vehicle movements and it stays contained within the central line of Manly Street and does not cross over. Other than that, brief.
Excuse me, I don't believe it's 601. C-106 rather.
601.
601. Oh, okay. Thank you.
And just to give the board a note there, we did meet with Conservation Day last night. We did get our notice of intent approved and they also approved our storm warning.
I have spoken with the Conservation Commission agent and he said, just what you said, everything went well, so that's all taken care of.
All right. Go ahead, have any questions? I'll feel free to ask them.
Okay, you were going to look at the lights, lights for security, so that they dimmed. You suggested that they dim the lights down at night. Mr. Clancy stated that they will look into it and was confident that they can do something with the lights so it won't be an issue for area residents.
Yeah, we said we could shut the lights off within one hour after closing, except for the security lights over the doors.
Okay.
That gives the employees a chance to get out.
Yeah, all right. So it'll just be security lights on.
Yeah, they just have a small light right over the door.
Yeah, I know. It is. Okay. And, okay, and you're not planning on having any floor drains?
Not inside the building.
Okay. Just trying to reiterate to everything that we're concerned about. Okay, the conservation is okay.
Do you have Mike's letter there? The his response? I thought I put it in with the.
This is the big roll that you just gave me.
Okay.
Was it in there?
I think I put it in the mail, in the meeting stuff tonight.
Okay.
I hope.
Has anybody else commented on this?
No, that's the only one.
Nobody else?
No.
Did it come in on his letterhead or was it in email?
It looks like the applications.
Here's an email from Mike. Apparently he watched our cable.
Yeah, so that reiterates what's on the other one.
And then it said, "I sent in with the package, the building of Ms. Carmen's. I have them attached here." Okay.
Although you're not going to do it, are you there?
He says they're attached here, but we don't have the, there's no attachment.
One second, actually. Thank you.
But apparently he did send something. I got him, Joanna.
You got him?
Okay, this is the building commissioner. "One, request a written mitigation plan, employee training in case of accidental discharge into Water Resource Protection District, both inside the warehouse and outside the parking lot. Show on plans where and what mitigation supplies product. It will be on hand in case of an incident." Number two, "Request that property owners offer police and fire to utilize buildings that are going to be torn down for training purposes." And three, "Request that the following language be included in the decision. Prior to the construction of the site, whether or not pursuant to the building permit, but excluding any work associated with continuing permitting," say in. "Prior to any construction on the site, whether or not pursuant to a building permit, but excluding any work associated with the continuing permitting of the site branch, the applicant shall..." "...deliver to the board a check in amount of $10,000 to be used for the town building inspector to retain outside experts for the technical review and construction inspection required under these conditions. Said funds shall be deposited by the board in an account pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 44, Section 53G, and shall only be used in technical reviews and construction inspections associated with this project. Any unspent funds shall be returned to the applicant. The accrued interest, if any, at the completion of the project. If at any time the amount remaining in the account falls below $2,500, the board shall inform the applicant and the applicant shall forthwith deliver additional funds to replenish the account to $10,000. Said funds may be used by the town building inspector to hire civil engineering traffic and/or other design, engineering, and construction professionals that the building inspector be reasonable in national survey to ensure compliance with the conditions here of the state building code." Number four, "If applicant shall install ballards around any gas meters, electrical meters, equipment, and any other infrastructure related to the items." And five, "If the owner, contractor, or linesman shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with all the code officials involved with this project to ensure everyone is on the same page and streamline the process from committing to activity." Joanna, could you make a copy so you can read it for us?
So just my question is, I think we would be amenable to adding those as conditions to the special permit. The one that I was just wondering is the first one that he mentioned, having the operations and training plan, it's built prevention and all that. Could that condition be words such that that would be submitted to them with the building permit application, or we have to develop that now?
He said to show them on, because I think what he's looking for, I think, is like stations and, you know, where they will be, but, you know. I seen him play, he'd open a door and it's a...
You mean like an eye wash station or something?
Like an eye wash station or, well, it wouldn't be fire extinguisher, it would be the other thing.
Well, it sounds to me like he wants to have some things, if something gets released that might be heading toward the wetland or whatever, that you have some booms there or you have some, you know, dry stuff that you can stop up pads.
He didn't do that, but the engineer did it with that one on Snell's property. He had a small building off to the side that was supposed to be speedy, dry booms.
Yeah, but we can keep things like that in the building, but a lot of times we'll write a plan and we can submit that with the building permit. He won't give us a permit till we give him that, but I wonder if we could just make that timing of that commission, that condition with the building permit.
I always thought that was part of his anyways.
Yeah, that's his purview, isn't it?
I mean, the drainage and that type of stuff has been taken away from us.
Let's do them one at a time. Number one, which is the... How about if we say that mitigation plan, training, and warehouse, and pretty much what this plan shall be submitted to the buildings, to the building inspectors.
With the building permit application time with us, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be approved by the building inspector before, so we can take care of that. Re-requesting the building, I don't, whether you want to offer it to the police and fire for drills.
Could we just say we'd like to talk about it, but I don't think that's an appropriate condition of the special permit?
I don't think, I wonder.
Because it doesn't live on with the permit, it's fleeting, yeah.
You know, they put it up there.
We'd have to talk about it, but I don't know if the timing's going to work and, you know.
Because they don't burn them down anymore. What they do is they go in, they dig cut holes in the roof and make up.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk to the fire department about it, but I prefer not to have that be in the special permit, since it's just a fleeting condition.
I don't think it needs to be in the special permit.
No, I don't. And then we requested the next language. Finally, we're... I don't know where he's got this language. I think this came out of the State Building Commission's... Ben, we have to leave it open for an open meeting. Ask him if you can shut the door. Actually, it's coming right through. You can hear it, it sure falls.
Yeah, that's why I'm leaning forward trying to...
Thank you. Do you have any problem with a...
I don't have any problem with it as a condition. It seems to me like it's a building permit, building department issue and they're going to ask me for it and I'm going to have to do it anyway, but, you know, if he wants to belt and suspend it.
I don't see why it's anything that doesn't fall under any of our criteria for special permit. The special permit is for the water protection district. That has nothing to do with the water protection district. That's his job.
Why don't we say that you have to adhere to the requirements of the building permit?
We do anyway, so.
I know, I know you do. I'm just, I'm just trying to get through this. If applicant will install ballards around gas meters, electric meters, do you have those on there, Paul?
Well, we don't have specifically ballards yet. We haven't worked out the utility connections, but everything, all our utilities are going to be coming to this front corner here, so we'll have the gas in here and the electrical and...
So it won't be in an area of traffic?
No, no, it'll be outside on this grass area here, something like that, so, but we'll coordinate with utility companies and...
Why don't we say, "If required, ballards shall be sent to the satisfaction of the building contractor," probably that comes.
The only other place I can see the ballards would be is like an entrance that's on a ground level.
Yeah, that's if you have like a drive-in door, you don't want them to drive in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we sometimes do that, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to protect if somebody slips or slides or...
Yeah, the one thing about the utility thing though, Paul, is like when we go to do these, sometimes utilities have their own spacing and regulations, so...
Well, I know that they have their own specific for, like the transformer thing. It's going to be a certain cement structure, it's built a certain way, and so. Been come across that a number of times where if it isn't done exactly, there is...
These aren't going to be in areas of parking lots or anything, so.
Okay, and site plan review, I think we've covered everything with the site plan review. There's already got it. Is there anybody from the public here for this one or are you for the others? Are you here, anybody here for the Manly Street? Okay, good. You're here for the United, what is it?
I'm here for the drive.
All of these, each one of them is a different kind. That's why I'm a little confused.
I'm questioning, won't this condition setting up a fund that you can draw it down from?
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
That's mine, right?
It seems to already be under his, I mean, where is it? It's nothing to do with any of the special permit with water protection.
Yeah, I just got the impression that he wanted us to put that in there because he doesn't have the mechanism, but...
He's citing the law.
Yeah, right, but I think that's, a lot of times, the law is meant for the planning board, so that we can use the money, but it sounded like he wanted us to set it up so he could hire during construction to review.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, so I'm just questioning, well, I just had, I mean, I don't have a problem with it if he wants us to do it, it's just a pain in the...
Yeah, but I think it's for him to do it, the way it's worded.
Right, but he wants the money to come to us.
Yeah, and two places the board has mentioned, initially and then...
Yeah, "Deliver to the board a check in the amount of $10,000 to be used for the town building inspector." So we're the board, so he wants to use that money.
Yeah, but then we don't have control over when he wants to use.
Right.
So it should go directly, he should, if he's requesting, he should request it with the building permit.
Yeah, I just don't know if, I just don't know if that state law, which I'm not familiar with it, but I just don't know the language to it, but I don't know if he can't do it that way. If the state, the law he's citing, Chapter 44, Section 53G, only applies to like planning boards, zoning boards, CONCOMs.
Okay.
So he's trying to set it up saying like, "Oh, I need people to review and the only way I can do this is through the board," so then he comes to us and says, you know, "I need to hire so-and-so to do some inspection on site." That's the way I'm taking it? I just don't know, I don't know enough about what he can, yeah, it'd be a lot easier if he could ask for the $10,000 check and then hire people, but I don't know if he's got that legal he can do it.
It's the building inspector. Any other construction in towns we've ever done it?
Yeah, I think he's leaning towards that now with the other one up on Lincoln Street.
Yeah, I think he did.
Lincoln Street, I don't think he came and asked for that.
No, I know, but it's too late now because we already issued the permits. I mean, I don't have a problem, it's just, if he doesn't have that mechanism, if he can't do it that way, I don't really have a problem, because I know he does need specialty, you know, he might need an engineer or something out there at some points, but... I could look it up, but...
No, wait, what's your thoughts?
It's going to be a pain on our part.
Yeah.
Because honestly, if he wants to hire somebody, he's going to have to come to us first and say, "Hey, I want to hire so-and-so to be out on the site for," you know, and a lot of these things are just kind of like, I don't know, maybe, off the top of my head, I don't know, but, you know, he wants somebody to inspect the paving, say, so he's like...
He wants an on-site building inspector.
Well, a building on site, he has to have an engineer anyways, and I think that's how it's pur viewed.
Yeah, when the structural stuff comes in, he might want that reviewed, but...
Which usually he just, when it's done, they send in a report saying it was done sufficiently.
Yes.
He gets a...
So I just don't know how that, I can imagine it works, it just, you know, but like I said, every time he wants to draw it down, he can't just draw it down and hire somebody, he's going to have to come to us to draw it down. And a lot of those things, you don't know, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you think you're going to be paving in a month and all of a sudden you've got an opening where the paver can be out there tomorrow and you're rushing around and going like, "Oh, well, I need, you know, I need somebody out there tomorrow to inspect paving or something."
Can we maybe talk to him tomorrow about this? Because I've seen this done a couple different ways, like with the Gillette Stadium, for example, I know the Foxborough Building Inspector, you know, he couldn't be spending his whole day at Gillette Stadium, so he had to hire people, and those people were actually reimbursed by the builder, you know, so I think there's a couple different ways to do it, like you might be able to submit a bill and we'd agree to pay the bill for that outside help, you know, or we can give them third-party reports. I think it might be worth just chatting with him and make, not that we object to it, but just to see what the different mechanisms are.
I think the problem is, this is, what he's requesting has never been requested. You people that are more of these...
He's treating it like a bond, when you hold a bond for something that's an improvement, then you can call on the bond. He's kind of, he's using that lane, I think.
Because we asked for, on the subdivisions, we asked for surety, and it's the same, same thing, we get an amount of money and then we draw it down, what's ever left, we, again, when the final CO is done, we return it.
No, I mean, he has the ultimate lever because he's going to give the CO, so if he had a bill and we didn't pay it, he pulled up the CO, right? So I think it might be worth a chat with him tomorrow.
Because it sounds like the way he wants to do it, I mean, it's going to delay, you know, he, like I said, he might have to wait almost two weeks to come to us and say, "Oh, I need someone, you know, I've got this," and meanwhile, you're building and it's going to delay you guys, because, hey, I can't get somebody out there, you know, you want to pave tomorrow, I can't get somebody out there for two weeks, and all of a sudden you're delayed, so.
You know, this comes down to the mechanics of him not having a way to write a check for whatever this is, right?
Yeah, but wouldn't he just turn around and submit you the bill for what was being done?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If he's going to submit us the bill, we just paid the bill.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, instead of having the law drawn out there.
Well, this, he can just draw down on this, all he has to do, but whether, do we have, it doesn't say, do we, because it says...
You know, it's kind of like a peer review, like when you have to pay for a peer review, you have to put the money out and pay for the peer review ahead of time, sort of like that.
I mean, that's what we do on some...
Five shall be used by the building inspector to hire, and then he goes on to say, so he's saying that he's got it. I don't think we have to, I think once it's in there, it has to be in there, you know, it's there, but it's, because the check is supposed to come to the board, and then if it's, if it ever gets down to 25, "The board shall inform the applicant." So we are holding the money, but yet it's all off by him, it's...
I would like to suggest that the proponent talked to the building inspector and let them agree to something.
I mean, I think if the board wants to include a condition, you know, in the special permit that says that the proponent will agree to put up, you know, maximum of $10,000 or reimburse the town a maximum of $10,000 for reviews and inspections, we would be amenable to that condition. Then the manner of how it gets done can be worked out.
Well, and I know you're probably, you know, with the coming, you want to get on with it, so if we close the hearing and vote, well, then we can't, we've got to keep the hearing open until...
Well, can we just put...
So if we can come up with some language that is agreeable, that is acceptable, and maybe what we, kind of we're talking at the beginning, that surety account is to be established with the building inspector and...
I just think it should, the proponent will be responsible for whatever he's asking for, and let it be worked out at that.
Well...
Instead of establishing an account...
Yeah, but I think he has...
Because he doesn't, he kind of, if they don't meet and pay what he wants paid for, he doesn't have to give him an occupancy permit.
But I don't believe that he can go out and hire somebody when he does, because we can't spend any money if it isn't in our budget, and that's the same thing, that's why he wants the surety account to be there. Then if he sees something and he says, "We've got to have an engineer review it or we need to get something done," he can just do it, you know, he can get on the phone and it's done, and it's there, whereas if we could go, so we're there. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Can we, can we do it, say that a surety account is to be set up overseeing the inspection of it, acceptable to the building inspector? We can put the amount in.
To have us do it, though? Again, I mean...
No, not to have us do it.
I mean, if it's a, I, can the building, can he just go out and hire, I mean, if we say, you know, a surety in the amount of $10,000 shall be provided to the building inspector for his own, you know, for his own use or what have you. Probably not for his own use, but for, you know...
It would be the building department, right?
Yeah, yeah, we don't want him to go buy a new car or something, but...
Well, because he's technically is the building department. That includes buildings, the plumbing, electrical, all fall under him.
Right. He is the building commissioner.
So he's already got two that are there, and he's looking to have engineering type thing, which I always thought the building inspector had the right. I mean, somebody has, somebody has to look at their plans engineering-wise and tell him unless he just looks at it himself, right?
He has to have the funds in hand before he can authorize it.
Yeah.
I mean, if the engineer offers, he wants an engineer to look at something specific, and the engineer sends a bill, and he hands the bill to them, and they pay for it. If they don't pay for it, then he doesn't let them go further or get the occupancy. I, it's, I mean, it doesn't, I don't see where law has to be involved if there's an agreement. I mean, it should be a subject of his, of the building's permit, not the special permit.
I mean, we could certainly say that we would post a check for $10,000 when we filed for the building permit, we would give him an extra $10,000, we could say that. I just don't know enough about what he's doing to know whether or not he has the ability to, you know, sign contracts and cut checks and all that. That's why I think he's trying to follow your, he's trying to do something in your lane, I think.
Because we do have the authority to handle this surety, I don't know whether he does or not.
I don't know that either. I mean, I've done this in the city of Boston, you pay it to Boston Water and Sewer, you give them $10,000. And then they pay all their inspections, and if it goes down, you have to give them more. But we pay it to Boston Water and Sewer, we don't pay it to the building department, because it's the water and sewer department that makes the inspections. So it's not clear to me, like, who exactly with them.
I mean, it'd be the same thing, except you put building department instead of water and sewer.
Right.
I mean, sort of the type of agreement you have for doing something like that, I just don't, I mean...
I don't know why he submitted it with the board on it, that's the only...
Yeah, that's the thing with me.
It almost sounds like, I don't have the power to do this, and I'm just the planning board.
He has a lot of power.
I thought he did, too, but I, I saw this somewhere one time, but we never even discussed it, I didn't know that this was, I'm surprised that it too.
I just wish there was a way we could come up with, like, generic language, saying that the proponent is amenable to reimbursing or, you know, posting up to $10,000 to pay for engineering fees or plan reviews as needed, and maybe just leave it like that. And then let's work out who the money gets to after, I don't know, is that possible to do that?
That's what I think, I just don't like...
It seems like we're trying to solve a problem that does not yet exist.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we just don't say who it goes to...
Designing mechanics is something we don't have. I think we just have to agree to do it, and then figure out how it works when it's time to make it work. It would be nice, obviously, if we had something, well, you know, we just had the numbers in, but, hey.
Before I close the hearing, let's, let's... Okay, so they're gonna dim the lights, they're not gonna have floor drains, they're going to ask for a weight, we're gonna be voting on waiving the... So the parking lot can be built in phases. And then we're gonna come to this, there shall be a written mitigation plan submitted to the satisfaction of the building inspector.
With the, with the application for building permit.
We're not doing the police and fire, that's in the minutes, and if they're concerned...
We'll talk to them, we will.
And it's something that you will, you'll discuss if it can be arranged to fit your schedule. Then the language you're gonna come up, and as far as the bollards will put in that, bollards and safeguards, if needed, shall be put into the satisfaction of the building inspector, something like that. Like this, this pre-construction stuff, that's his.
We do that on every job.
Yeah, it is, that's got nothing, nothing to do with us, we're just looking at things for the, for the, to make sure that it, the site is built adequately.
Protect the water.
And then, that's for the site plan, and then for the water, that the safeguards are...
You have to have a point coming that they make you have a pre-construction.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, so, okay.
I do have a point of order. How does the board usually handle the Mullins Rule statute? Because it's very important, we have the four votes, so when, do you typically have a form that one of your members would fill in?
Yeah, we do have it, because you did it last time on...
Yeah, I just didn't have, I didn't get your email till like six tonight, so I will...
I didn't realize that this...
Please, because we already have a special permit, I just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, thank you.
Yeah, I already, I already pulled it out.
All right, good, that's my man, thank you.
No, I learned that somebody wasn't coming in, so I, I just reiterated that he did it. He always reads things and keeps on top of everything, but I just wanted to make sure he was prepared for it when he came in.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll start voting.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
A motion in a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All those opposed, the vote is unanimously, close the public hearing. Now, we gotta run through some, some stuff here. Pursuant to section 7.5.3.1, Donna, just copy that.
I know, yeah, I'm pretty much the same.
I'm just reading it because, because, A, the specific site is in appropriate location for such use structure or conditions. B, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles, pedestrian, or volume greater than the capacity of the streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And C, access to the site or a street is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. I'll entertain a motion to...
So moved, as presented.
In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
The board is unanimously in favor. And then pursuant to the requirements of 7.5.3.2, the board must also make the findings that the use of the Water Resource Protection District Zone 2 shall be subject to the following conditions, use is appropriate, excuse me, A, the use is appropriate to hydrology, natural to soils and other characteristics for the site to be developed, B, the use will not during construction thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on any of the zones of the Water Resource Protection District, and C, the use will not adversely affect an existing or designate a future public well. The board must make an affirmative finding that the proponents have met the both criteria, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Now we have to come up with the conditions. Can you, can you read back with you?
Well, I have so much, no digital lights, the way, brought on the way of Mr. Parkin to be installed in stages, right out of mitigation plan for Mike.
They shall prepare a mitigation plan acceptable to Mike.
Yeah.
To...
Yeah. And the bollards.
Yeah. Well, what do you, what do you got there for the bollards?
If I have anything else, it's already in here, so, you're not doing with the police and fire, right?
No.
Okay. And what about the, you want to put in, for them to talk with Mike about the surety?
Okay, that's the one we haven't come up with yet, okay.
I'll move that the surety issue that they must meet with Mike to establish the surety or discuss the surety issue. I mean, if it's, there's a law, if there's 44 something or other that it refers to, then that's what you'd be discussing to him about it, and wherever it goes, I just...
Okay.
No, I was gonna say, just make it a generic, the applicant shall, you know, provide a surety of the amount of $10,000, you know? Pretty much say what Mike said, except for don't include the board, don't include the building department, figure it out when, you know, figure out the mechanism down the, you know, as it comes to it, because, you know, Mike, it may end up being, yeah, you know, it has to go to the planning board, which will be a pain, but, you know, at least leave it open-ended for now.
Let's wait, let's see, wait, okay, why do you read that back to us?
I got that. I'm not seeing anything else.
No, just what Jim said, just that.
Yeah, okay, that's what you're going on, Jim's words?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to hear the words.
Just repeat that.
Okay, we want you to...
Probably won't figure those out for a couple of hours.
We know, we know, we have to have, that's what we're voting on.
That the proponents will meet with the building inspector to discuss the $10,000 surety amount established, and leave it open-ended.
How about the proponent agrees...
Okay.
To provide a surety of $10,000 for per, uh, plan review and inspections?
Okay.
Just stop right there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, there was a part two about the, you know, if it gets below a certain amount, you know?
Well, yeah, but he can, he can, he can just say, you gotta replenish it, period, because it's supposed to be $10,000 in there. When there isn't in $10,000, he asks you to replenish it.
I'd like, just like she said, if it, if it becomes a money issue, then it gets discussed at the time when it becomes. But trying to put a specific, I don't want, I don't...
I, I think the fact that the $10,000 is there, it, that's what it can be, he can, he can ask for, when it's at five, he could ask for it to be replenished if he thought...
That he, if he...
Thought there would be a need for...
Well, yeah, I mean...
I don't think he needs that, that number, I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Well, you could also say we would maintain a surety with the $10,000 amount.
There you go.
If that helps you, does that help you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad you're here.
If it weren't on TV, I'd say something else.
No, don't we?
I don't see anything else quickly looking for...
Okay, let's, just read what this motion is gonna be.
That the proponent agrees to establish a surety in the amount of $10,000...
An surety account.
Account, okay. I'm reading here. And will, I, I...
Like, to be used for, and you could lift the...
Exactly, I got it all over the place, yeah. I don't take good notes that far, great ones. And that they will maintain the surety amount if it falls below...
No.
No?
No, they would just maintain, just maintain the account.
Okay.
Yeah, so instead of saying, deliver a check in the amount of $10,000, we're agreeing to maintain a surety of $10,000 to be used for the, for experts, technical reviews, construction inspections, anything that's required by the planning board's conditions. Interestingly enough, it doesn't say to review the plans, but whatever, yeah, something like that, I think, works.
Okay, I'll work on that, you can...
No, we gotta have, we gotta have the wording, just take your time and get it, what we're voting on...
Port past them, that's what the problem is.
Write the whole motion down.
All right. Agrees, the proponent agrees to a $10,000 surety account for reviews, inspections, what was the third thing?
It was tech, inspections, technical reviews, and construction inspections, right?
Okay. I mean, that pretty much covers it, yeah.
Is it nineteen? Have you, have you got it all?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Are we good?
No, read it out, read it back to us.
What I was made to, had the proponent, the opponent?
Yeah.
Proponent agrees to a $10,000 surety account for reviews, inspect, technical inspections and construction standards, is that...
Technical reviews, inspections, and construction inspections.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's, that's what I had, okay. Technical reviews, okay, inspections and construction inspections.
Maybe you want to put maintain.
Yeah.
I think what, at the top of it, the top of it, only reason to maintain.
Create and maintain.
Yeah, create and maintain.
A surety account, maybe with an initial balance of $10,000 to be refunded, or some language, as the funds are expended, you know, to the satisfaction of the building department.
And we really should have the, anything remaining at the, at the time of completion shall be returned.
We know where he lives.
He moves fast.
Let's, let's hear it again, and I'll see together, Donna.
All right, the proponent agrees to a $10,000 surety, well, actually, to meet with the building inspector for $10,000.
No, 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 they, they, they agree to maintain a $10,000.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, put it in there.
All right, so we don't, for technical reviews...
Start at the beginning.
The proponent agrees to a $10,000 surety account for technical reviews, inspections, and construction, both inspections. And will maintain, will maintain it to the satisfaction of the building commissioner. And anything left in the account, when it's finished, will be returned to the proponent.
No.
That covers a several-year period.
Yeah, but no, we read the part about, next to last sentence with the building inspector, the building commissioner.
And will maintain the account to the satisfaction of the building inspector, my building commissioner?
I think just if at the beginning, we say, the proponent will establish and maintain a $10,000 surety account, then we can take out that sentence about the building.
Yeah.
I'm fine if you want to leave it, if there's any change back in my pocket, you can leave that out if you want.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, and... You got it all down now, let's just hear it, right, read it right through, just to make...
The proponent agrees to establish a $10,000 surety account for technical reviews, inspections, and construction expenses, and will maintain to the satisfaction, oh, you want that still in there?
No.
No, okay, so then that, that ends that, anything left will be... No, okay, so then that, that ends that, uh, anything left will be returned to that. And they will.
Unexpended funds.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
No, no, anything left is not, not good.
I know, but see, I would fix that.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
I think we got the spirit of it, but maybe we should all take a peek at this before you sign it.
Yeah, well, I, I wanna get it, I wanna, I wanna get it done, but, so, at the end, unexpected, I, I'm.
Unexpended.
Unexpended, funds will be returned.
Okay.
To this young lady right here.
That's right.
I, I would, I would have put that in, but.
Small bills, unmarked. It's funny how she unzipped her flock of.
I'm having him write it down, so that we can, we can pass a cheat sheet over to Dan and Donna.
You, you can, you can go to the cable company where I'm, we're gonna be.
Once I put this together, he's gonna read it anyways, and he'll let me know if it's not right.
But I, I don't, I don't, I, I, I want it understood, because we, this is something a little.
It's for a motion, it's, it's not like it's, it's a motion, it's gotta be voted on, and, and only voted on what it's saying, so.
Okay, so with, with that in, in effect, we, we have, we need a motion to approve the special permit for the Water Resource Protection District with the conditions that we have just discussed. We have a motion, we have a second. Come on, Tony.
I don't know, we have beaten this to death. A second.
Okay. Mr. Stetson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnahan?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
And Mr. Hurley votes yes. So it is the unanimous vote of people. Now, while we're here, we also have to address the site plan approval. We will need a motion to approve the site plans as prepared and revised to October the 6th, is that the latest? The site plans revised to October the 6th, 2022. We have a motion to approve the site plan approval process. We have a second.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stetson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnahan?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
And the chair, Mr. Hurley, the chair votes yes, the vote is unanimous. Okay. You have too many sheets here, you know, Paul. What I'm, I'm gonna do is I'll.
Make Paul stand some. You have to stay after school and stand off.
I, I give you one, one sec. I'm sure you wanna go home, and I know the people behind you for the next hearing, they want, they want you to get out of here, too.
It's always nice to know when you're not on it. It's funny how that piece of property, originally, you know, the history was brought, was changed from residential to industrial for a large liquor warehouse. That's originally, before the guy that's got it now took it and made it into a contractor's company, so that originally it was gonna be a Jewish warehouse.
Well, that could happen.
Just gonna say, yeah.
That could still happen.
Yeah. But that's, was one of the local, I think Taunton won the battle and got it over an industrial park over in Taunton.
Listen, you could throw out something. It's the other one. The MBTA is going to the other one. Okay, we will be, uh, this will be written up, we will review it, if you could give me, did you have a few email on here, Paul?
No, I'll give you a card.
Okay. And what we'll do is, before we sign it, we'll. Okay. We will, um, send it out to you.
Yeah, my lawyer will appreciate that, thank you.
And then, then we will, um, be signing it at our next meeting in two weeks. We'll get the other signer, then it'll go to the town clerk, so. The, uh, the wheels are in motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, here's, here's a copy of this.
You have my email, too, so.
Yeah.
Already.
Just need a one minute break.
I said I need a one minute break.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, very much. We'll, we'll take a, we'll take a couple minute recess. The time being, eight thirty-five, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a continuation of a public hearing for thirty-five, United Drive. And somebody here to speak for it?
Actually, before you start, too, um, sorry, yeah, no, before you start, I missed the last meeting, but I've read the meeting minutes and I'm up to date, and I will file the, uh, the notice tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, we're requesting a continuance for the next hearing, um, we're working with conservation and our consultant, um, and, yeah, we, we need to, um, sorry. Uh, oh, yeah, they're, they're reviewing the stormwater, and we're also providing a foremetrix plan, which should be submitted sometime next week, um, so.
Okay.
We need a little more.
Have, um. Let me to, to try to expedite things. Have you, have you got a copy of the, um, special permit that was issued in Econ D to date? It was done a few years ago. It was done in.
Should be on the top of each page, the date.
It is, you can't read it.
No, I meant as each page goes on in the left-hand corner.
Okay, and in, in September, 2013.
I don't.
Okay.
I only have, I have the A and R, I was only planning on discussing the A and R, it's middle of the, in the continuance.
All right. Because there's some things in, in here, no, not really. But, uh, you can, you can get it from the town clerk, it's number two eighty-two, special permit, it was granted for this, this prop.
I, we may have it, I don't.
Okay.
Have it, put it in.
Okay, so, um, can you put it in, in, in writing to, uh, to continue it for?
Sure.
For that time.
Do you have, is the next meeting you're looking at?
Uh, will you be prepared for the first Wednesday in, in November?
We already have three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause we got quite a bit going on there. Will you, you, you will have been to the, the.
We were, yeah, just, uh, that's just one reading back, right?
Yeah. Okay, make it to that.
Okay.
We, we, we have two others, so the, uh, they will be first, so you'll be, be after that, but if you, if you cannot make it, give us, let us know, and we can, let us know in, in writing, just even emailing to us.
Okay.
We, we qualify, if you can't make it for then.
I'm sorry, is it the first or the second?
It'll be the first Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I call it, okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, November the second. Okay, we have a request to ex, uh, continue the public hearing for this, uh, site to November the, the second, and it will be after the, the other public hearings that we have. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll be continuing it to then.
The, um, four and eight is in that box.
Okay. It is, okay.
I'm sticking up there, gentlemen. No, no, next block's over.
Give it a roll, I think.
Oh, okay.
Okay, would you like to speak to the four and eight?
Yeah.
Have you got a Mylar there, or just print?
That's just print, it's a Mylar.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'm Matt Hunter, Web of Design Group, on behalf of, um, Ajax, United Drive LLC, um, submitted this A and R, uh, just basically looking to revise the lot lines between existing parcels, uh, to create two buildable lots, this look, there's actually a, a sliver of land that goes along here, so this built, is landlocked currently, uh, buildable, so basically adding this whole strip to this parcel, and then changing this lot line, allowing this building to, uh, provide different form, uh, of this building here. Have, now, lot area frontage, um, and it'll be, uh, meaningful access once we have the warehouse designed. So, uh, I believe they had called and asked for some additional copies, which we think we delivered last week.
Yes, we were, yeah. And we only have one, one print to begin with.
So you're talking just a four and eight on one lot right now, or actually, two, but only one lot is projected to be built on?
No, both, uh, both lots are projected to be built on, uh, but this one was currently blocked, uh, had no frontage. So essentially, this one is just having a slight change here, well, it's losing this whole strip here to, um, and then there's this lot line change here.
Didn't we do something in this area here, just recently?
Yeah, Wilbers.
Yes.
Wilbers is playing this.
Didn't we do something with that frontage land? Cause that, cause whoever presented it talked about that strip.
Here's, here's Wilbers.
Does that take away from the frontage on? Wilbers?
And Wilbers, uh. Did Wilbers extend it? Is any, any of this padded, is it Wilbers, is he included?
I thought that land on the corner, that strip that went up there, that was discussed at that other.
Century, maybe?
No.
No.
Two, two, that's, uh, Ocus, Ocus.
Okay.
Where is the septic building? Is that the thing right in the middle?
The septic is actually this landlocked parcel here, says.
Yeah, but I mean, the building in, in the, the, uh, tank and every, where the, everything's pumped into, and then I know it goes to the leachant system.
Yeah.
Is that what's right in the middle on the two lot lines?
The other treatment, yeah, yeah.
The treatment plant?
Yep.
He's got frontage and. The frontage, and he gave us a place to sign.
No building square.
Yeah.
I figured he'd be the one to pick that one up.
Does this require a square? What's gonna happen here?
Put it anywhere you want.
I mean, you could probably squeeze it in, but.
I just wanna be consistent.
But it has a purpose, and the purpose is generally residential.
I know. I want the scale, too, this is a hundred scale, it's gonna be this little.
Oh, yeah. Maybe that's it.
You can go up there.
Yeah, it is. All lots being subdivided shall be designed geographically to show a hundred foot, a hundred foot square beginning at the minimum, front yard setback line for structure, and no porch shop in F, no porch shop excessively funneled, so he'll, okay there, but you already doesn't have the hundred foot squares.
But there is no, but the, the reference doesn't exist, what does it say, thirty-five feet from the?
No, it, uh, beginning at the minimum front yard setback line.
But there are no setback lines here, because.
Yeah, but, but here, it's a fifty-foot setback, so he has to show a square setback fifty feet. If, up here in the, in the, uh, it's a chart up there.
No, I understand that, but.
He didn't, he didn't show it, he need, he, he needs to show where that, that line.
But in order to have a setback line, you have to have a planned structure, right?
No. There's a setback, it's the zoning setback.
Well, yeah, the reg, the, the number in the regulation is just, is one thing I'm saying.
Okay. Okay. My pen, we have another mic. Okay. We have, you could come up here, I'll show you, I'll get, I'll get it for you. Each lot, you have to show a hundred foot square and, uh, then it's fifty foot for building setback line, and it is, give you the requirement so that they know when you get back, you're not going to believe me and you want to check it, which you have every right to. So we'll take care of it when you come back, you come back in a week, see you, so just take care of the time.
Okay.
We might go take the Mylar, we don't want to. We don't need that either, so.
Or otherwise we do have the, these requirements for the.
Yeah, we, we have no problem, it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a zoning thing, the zoning, uh, compliance calls for you to, to have that on, on that.
Yeah.
So if, if you could make a request to, uh, to continue the Form A plan until, um, November the second? Could you do that, please?
Oh, sure. Sorry, I thought you were.
No, no, just, 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 just say it so that we, we, we have.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, okay, yeah, I'll request the continuous for the next meeting.
Okay, we have a request to continue the meeting to the, uh, November the second. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Vote is unanimous, we'll see you in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
And that's it, Ben.